Okay, it is six o'clock and meeting has started. So I'll call the regular order of the Mopita City Council of September 17th, 2024 in order. So while this meeting is being broadcast via Zoom, oral public comment may only be provided live at the city council meeting in person. The city council meeting is available for instant translation in over 50 languages with Wordly, accessible via mobile phone, computer, and video displays. To use Wordly, scan the QR code located on the title page of the agenda in the upper right-hand corner. So back to today's business, City Clerk, Presidente, please take your role.
Enda, for closed session, we have one item tonight that is a conference with legal counsel related to anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9 subsection B.
We're still having technical difficulties with the mics.
Thank you, Mayor. As indicated, there's conference with legal counsel related to anticipated litigation. The report out for that is that counsel has given direction to initiate an action pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.1 Subsection A2. Once formally commenced, particulars of that action will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry unless to do so would jeopardize service of legal process or the city's ability to conclude settlement negotiations to its advantage. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. And so now it's time for the Pledge of Allegiance. Would anyone like to lead the Pledge of Allegiance? Any of my colleagues? We have Councilmember Hanlin.
Thank you. Everyone rise. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stance, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And now we have the invocation led by Councilmember Fan.
Good evening, everyone. I noticed a number of nonprofit representatives and attendants, and I just want to say thank you for all that you do. I look forward to the discussions in the council meeting. So tonight, as we gather, let's take a moment to reflect on the privilege and responsibility we share as members of this community. We're here to serve, to listen, and to lead with compassion, Mayor. We're here to listen and to lead with compassion. In times of challenge, it is our unity that gives us strength. And in times of progress, it's our shared vision that propels us forward. Let us be inspired by the resilience of our city and the people who call it home. Every day, we see neighbors supporting neighbors, families working hard to build better lives, and individuals stepping up to make a difference. This is what makes our community strong, the belief that together we can face any obstacle and create a brighter future. And as we move through tonight's meeting, may we lead with wisdom, fairness, and a hopeful heart, always striving to make decisions that uplift every corner of the city. Let our work tonight be a testament to the commitment we have to each other and to the future we are building together. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Fan, for that wonderful invocation. And so now we will do presentations, and I will have to mention that the presentations for today were to be given to Dr. Jopra. I would like for you to come up, and let's have all the council members come up. We don't have the keys to the city because what happened, they weren't ready. They weren't made. They got, yeah, the vendor, it's a switch, the vendor switch. But we want to take, all of us take a picture with you here, because Dr. Jopra is, he is a renowned cardiologist, right? He, I mean, worldwide he is known. And not only that, he has done so much for the community, not only for the Indian community, but for everyone. And he's such a giving person. So we want to say some words, all the council members will say some words to you. So I'd like Dr. Jopra to say a few words because he has done so much for the community. He's world-renowned. He is sought after because he is one of the best heart surgeons in the world, and he has done so much for the community. I want you to come up here and say a few words. And again, apologies, the vendor, we didn't get the key. We were going to give him the keys to the city today, but we will have to give him, you know.
We have to give him the keys.
Well, now we're gonna have to give him two keys to the city. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, honorable council members, staff, and the citizens of Malpitas. It's really an honor, you know, not just as a cardiologist, but as a community activist. For the last 41 years, I've been around in the whole Northern California. Like Mayor said, you know, it's not just our community, Indian community, Hindu community, but community at large. That's why we call it Festival of Globe now. We used to call it Festival of India, India Day Parade, and we've been doing still our celebration of democracy right here in the city of Malpitas for many, many years, as Republic Day celebrations, Independence Day celebrations. Of course, during the COVID time, we had stopped, but the last couple of years, we have resumed it. And we want to make sure the community realizes and they unite, just like Honorable Councilmember Pham said, the unity and collaboration and working together for the sake of the community at every level, not at just the social level, but also the cultural, civilizational. I think it brings a lot of strength and brings the happiness, and that's what it's all about. I love to take care of people's health, but at the same time, the social health, cultural health, mental health, all these things are as important. And love to keep working with the city here, with all the citizens, get them together. And we're trying to always activate our community to contribute more and more. They have done very well in the IT and medicine businesses and everything else. But now in the public service, civic service, we are trying to encourage them to get more and more involved and contribute. Thank you very, very much again for the honor. This is token, doesn't matter, I get the key or not. Thank you so much.
You're always welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we will, we want to say a few words.
We'll take picture together.
All right. Keep back. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. forum. Members of the public are invited to speak on any item that does not appear on today's agenda. Please note that oral public comment may only be provided live at the city council meeting in person. Public forum will be limited to three minutes. They'll call for speaker. City Clerk will call the name from the speaker cards.
I'm going to list these out in order, and then I'd ask, please, to have yourself arrayed in the order that I call, and then approach the microphones up here at the front in order so that we can get through these quickly and efficiently. The first public speaker is going to be Paul Horziger, followed by Jean R., and then Lori Matthews.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Paul. My colleagues and I live in Santa Clara County and are volunteers with United Sovereign Americans, not spokespersons. United Sovereign Americans USA is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. Today, we come to you as concerned citizens. Highly qualified data teams have spent hundreds of hours analyzing the official 2022 voter rolls provided by California Secretary of State. The information they uncovered is alarming. The data teams' analysis indicate that a massive number of voter registration records do not comply with the standards defined by the Constitution, as well as federal and state laws. As such, the votes cast counted and certified in 2022 may not all have been accurate and compliant. We're not here to cast blame or aspersions on any elected official. We do not suggest that any candidates in any race have wrongly won or lost their races, nor do we advocate for the overturning or rerunning of any past elections. We are simply demanding an end to the inaccuracies and the uncertainty plaguing our elections. Tonight, we will present to you and the public a resolution that contains a summary of those findings, along with the election standards that must be upheld as defined by the federal elections, case precedents established by the Supreme Court and the constitutional articles and amendments. Though you bear no direct responsibility for anything in the electoral process, we come to you, our closest elected representatives, for support and action. We are asking you to listen to the resolution, take the necessity for valid elections seriously, and add the resolution to your next meeting agenda for a vote. Thank you. Our next three speakers will read the resolution in three parts, and our final speaker will conclude our presentation. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jean R., followed by Lori Matthews, then Alicia S., followed by Eric Matthews, and then Sue.
Hello. My name is Jean, and I'm here to read into the record the first portion of the USA Resolution. Resolution for a legally valid 2024 general election. Whereas it is recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections. Whereas it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. One, voter rolls must be accurate, National Voter Registration Act 1993. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. Three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system, Help America Vote Act 2002. Whereas the analysis of the California 2022 general election has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that appear to violate both federal and state laws, including 5,886,198 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the California State voter database, 2,776,939 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations, 123,785 more votes counted than voters who voted. No one knows who cast them, 2,776,849 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. Maximum allowable system errors for the 22 general election was 90. Certification as defined by law is an attestation of accuracy and compliance. The certification of the 2022 election appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Thank you.
Next, we have Lori Matthews, followed by Alicia S., then Eric Matthews, and then Sue.
Hello. My name is Lori Matthews, and I'm here to read into the record the next section of the USA Resolution. Whereas these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Whereas the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Whereas a 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. One, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility required to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Two, voter rolls certified, accurate, and available for public review and challenged 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Three, hand-marked, secure ballots similar to currency where imaging technology is used for tabulation. The security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Thank you.
Next, we have Alicia S., followed by Eric Matthews, then Sue, then Dennis Jamison, and then Voltaire Montemayor.
Good evening. My name is Alicia, and I'm here to read into the record the last section of the U.S. Resolution. Number five, adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witness after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records. Number six, ballots regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Number seven, a national institute of standards and technology compliant randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, and bonded security, forensics, or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the voter count, real physical ballots, adjudication, cast vote records, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Number eight, if the total of unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected, unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of records. Number nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Be it resolved that the Milpitas City Council members stand in support with the concerns and rounded remedies presented here. We implore the County Board of Supervisors, California Legislature, federal legislatures, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both California Secretary of State and county registers of voters to cooperate and fulfill these firm requests of the people. Thank you.
Next, we have Eric Matthews, followed by Sue, then Dennis Jamison, and followed by Voltaire Montemayor.
My name's Eric, and I am here to conclude our presentation. What you heard tonight is a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election from registration through certification. The resolution delineates meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. Your written copy cites many U.S. Supreme Court precedents and the federal and constitutional mandates that support the need for such actions. Large numbers of Californians have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. Official data show these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential to securing our liberty. The cost for not fixing the enumerated problems is immeasurable. So we urge you to put this resolution on the agenda for the next city council meeting, where you can vote to join us in support of fair, honest, and valid elections. The United Sovereign Americans website showcases our initiatives nationwide and features some extremely informative election videos. We encourage you to visit uniforfreedom.com and learn more about our organization and our goal to restore valid elections throughout our country. That's unitethenumberfourfreedom.com. One more time, unitethenumberfourfreedom.com. And, you know, for this National IT Professional Day, I'd like to give a shout out to the IT professionals who volunteered hundreds of hours to bring us the data in this resolution. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. My name is Sue Bizini, and I'm also a volunteer for United Sovereign Americans. Many Californians question the trustworthiness of our elections. Federal law outlines strict standards that must be followed in a federal election. This is a federal election. Starting with the specific requirements for valid voter registrations. We shared that in the 2022 general election, there were over 5.8 million ineligible or uncertain registrations on the California State voter rolls, and of those, over 2.7 million. These are records that are facially invalid per law, things like invalid birth date, invalid names, invalid addresses. They voted before they were registered. They're older than 115 years old, which is the oldest living person in America. Almost 124,000 more votes were counted than voters who voted. And because of the information highlighted above, there were almost 2.8 million apparent voting violations that exceeded the 90 that we are allowed per law. In California, every active person on our voter rolls gets mailed a ballot, and ballot harvesting, that is turning in ballots for others, is legal. How can we tolerate having almost 6 million ballots mailed out to questionable registrants? They must be confirmed valid. Our voter rolls must contain only legitimate registrations. Otherwise, how can we ever trust in the integrity of our elections? The resolution outlined meaningful remedies that proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. Federal laws and principles of law already define those remedies. USA is just demanding that our election officials follow the law. The last page, the last page of the printed copy you received of the resolution contains the many U.S. Supreme Court precedents, federal laws, and constitutional mandates that support the need for such actions. Though you bear no direct responsibility, as was stated earlier, for anything in the electoral process, we come to you, our closest elected representatives, for support and action. This is a nonpartisan issue. It is a civil rights violation if our votes are being diluted by those ineligible to vote. That is why it is so important that our voter rolls contain only legitimate voters. The cost of not fixing the enumerated problems is immeasurable. So we urge you to put this resolution on the agenda for your next city council meeting. At that time, you can vote to join us in supporting fair, honest, and valid elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public?
Next, we have Dennis Jamison, followed by Voltaire Montemayor.
Good morning, mayor, distinguished city council members. I'm Dennis Jamison. I worked in Milpitas for many years. I never thought I'd be standing in front of the city council, though. I come here as a representative of another election effort. It's called the Election Integrity Project of California. This project has been operating since 2010. This project has been observing at the registrar of voters' offices all throughout the country, all throughout the state of California and throughout our county. We have observed a number of violations that USA is representing here. We recorded these things, and we brought lawsuits to bear. The reason that we did that is because, over the years, as we brought our findings reports to the Secretary of State, or the Attorney General, or to the Department of Homeland Security, or the Department of Justice, we were ignored. Again and again, we appealed to those elected officials. Now, here we are. We're here because you are our closest elected officials, and in reality, we would hope that you could listen to us. We are concerned. We're not asking you to spend a lot of money or do anything, but we would like, at least, you would put this agenda, this item on your agenda, that you would be able to vote on it, and essentially affirm that you would like the laws that are on the books currently obeyed. This is really what it's about, whether people are obeying the law or they're not. There's always theory and practice. And also, when the IPCA has brought this to the attention of the people who are in positions of responsibility, they said these laws are on the books. Reality is that we have observed firsthand, myself firsthand, seeing that these things were ignored or treated as something as an advisory rather than the law. We urge you to consider this carefully, put it on your agenda so that we could explain a little bit more clearly, and that you would be able to join us in one way or another, either affirming or denying that you would like to have fair, honest, and valid elections. Thank you.
Last public speaker is Voltaire Montemayor.
My name is Voltaire Montemayor, Milpitas Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, City Manager and staff. I agree fully on the resolution that's being presented. That's why we have the word "one vote counts." Not "one vote counts" in "more than one vote." So equal number of voters, equal number of counted votes. That's great. Anyway, it's not my campaign. I walk around, and people were saying about, like, some areas of blood zone, and they want to reduce or no more, there's been no more flood in Milpitas, but I didn't answer them. They want at least to be, that blood zone rate be reduced. And then a question about, I don't know, I'm not complaining, Engineering Public Works, they said something has to be done on the streets and the trees, but I didn't, I didn't focus much on that one. Another one is, there is urgency on a pickleball somewhere in one of the parks in Milpitas. It's really dangerous for players, so we need to fix the court. I've been, I've seen those problems. There are cracks, there are kinds of crevices, and even their equipment. So they asked me to escalate the problem of the courts. And there are more. In other words, this is not being me as a candidate for public servant. The main thing now is, we all respect each other, all the candidates, we love each other. Whoever wins, I may win, I may lose, I support, as you know. I'm sorry also that lately, I haven't attended some meetings, so instead of maintaining my 95%, I'm now going to 90% attendance in the city council meeting. So I apologize for that. There are more to report as far as the public needs and inquiries, but that's all for now. Thank you.
I have no additional public speaker cards, Mayor.
Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Voltaire Montemayor, and a guest for coming out here, because I know you're, I can tell that your passion is very strong about the integrity of our elections. And we will review this and come and make a consensus all with all those city council members. Thank you for coming out here. Thank you. Okay, now, now it's reading of the announcement of conflict of interest and campaign contributions.
Thank you, Mayor. Ask the mayor and each council member whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Councilmember Barbara Diou.
None.
Vice Mayor Chua. Vice Mayor Chua.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Councilmember Phan.
None.
Mayor Montano.
None.
Thank you. I ask the mayor and each council member to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the last 12 months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda, or contributions received from development project applicants for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Councilmember Barbara DiO.
None.
Vice Mayor Chua.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Councilmember Phan.
None.
Mayor Montano.
None.
Let the record reflect no reported conflicts. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to ask any of my colleagues if they would like to read the code of conduct. Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor will read the code of conduct. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Oops. Be respectful and courteous. Model civility. Avoid surprises. Praise publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the dais. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to the agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And now, moving on to the approval of the agenda, does anyone have any changes before making a motion to approve the agenda? Seeing none? I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the agenda. There a second? So it, so it was seconded by Vice Mayor, and so now we will vote.
Councilmember Barbara DiO.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Councilmember Phan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I'm an aye. Thank you for that. And now, moving on to the consent calendar, we'll take the next, we'll ask staff first for any comments.
No, no changes, no comments. Thank you, Mayor.
And now, we'll ask for the public for any comments on the consent agenda.
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to make any comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion. We have, we have, can't find you. Councilmember Leanne. Okay, thank you. Move to approve the consent items as submitted. So it was motion to approve the consent calendar by Councilmember Leanne, and it was seconded by Councilmember Phan. Now, we will call for the vote. Oh, it was Councilmember Barbara DiO, I'm sorry. Apologies.
Councilmember Barbara DiO.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Councilmember Phan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I'm an aye. Thank you very much. Now, we're moving on to the public hearings. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Our first item tonight for public hearing is the annual performance and evaluation report, well, consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, also known as CAPER. We have our housing official, Robert Musalem, here to make the presentation to the council.
Counsel, my name is Robert Musalem. I am the city's housing official, and I will be presenting you this evening on the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, also known as the CAPER, for fiscal year 22, 23, 2024. And I'll do my best to guide you through the PowerPoint here, so we're going on to the background slide now. A little background on the item, Community Development Block Grant, or more commonly referred to as CDBG, is administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. The intention of the program is to primarily benefit low and moderate income households. As a reminder, the performance for the activities you'll see tonight had been approved by the city council on May 2, 2023, as part of the 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan Process. Next slide. So what is the CAPER? It is a HUD-required document that encapsulates HUD's method of evaluating CDBG grantee performance. As part of the yearly review process, the CAPER describes the city's activities for fiscal year 2023 and 2024, and accomplishments towards the goals from the 2022 to 2025 consolidated plan. This CAPER is the second progress report for the consolidated plan, which was approved by city council on June 14, 2022. Next slide. So this slide provides a reminder of the total funding allocated for the 2023 and 2024 fiscal year. The city allocated $647,982 in formula funding, $150,000 in then prior year unused funding, for a total of $794,982 in funding that was allocated towards 18 organizations for a total of 19 activities. Next slide. So now, I will list our accomplishments over the next five slides in accordance with the goal that each activity is representing. So under the goal of maintain and preserve existing housing, Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley made critical housing repairs for 17 Milpitas households. Under the goal of affordable housing rental rehabilitation, Terrace Gardens Senior Housing met their goal of replacing the existing community wood trellis and roof repairs. Under the goal of fair housing, Project Sentinel completed 10 fair housing cases. And I'll move on to the next slide. Under the goal of assisting microenterprises and small businesses, the cities, the city of Milpitas's Economic Development Department distributed $2,000 grants to 25 microenterprises in Milpitas. Under the, under the goal of public services for children and youth, Child Advocates of Silicon Valley connected three Milpitas foster youth and children to court-appointed special advocates. Next slide, this one starting with domestic violence. Under the goal of public services for domestic violence support, Nextdoor Solutions to Domestic Violence provided 51 residents with supportive services and emergency shelter for victims of domestic violence. NYWCA Silicon Valley provided 32 residents with supportive services and emergency shelter for victims of domestic violence. Next slide, this one starting with seniors. Under the goal of public services for seniors, Catholic Charities Long-Term Care Unbudsman Program provided visits to 14 Milpitas residents in long-term care. Senior Adults Legal Assistance provided free legal services to 45 qualified Milpitas seniors. Health Trust provided 1,443 hot meals to eight homebound low-income seniors. An India Community Center provided well-being activity services to 100 Milpitas seniors. Next slide, so under community funding, public services. Under the goal of general community funding and public services, Silicon Valley Independent Living Center provided housing services for persons with disabilities for 246 individuals. Pregnant provided support to 160 children, youth, and adults from special needs community. Lighthouse of Hope Counseling Center provided five Milpitas residents with counseling. And then lastly, under public improvements. Under the goal of public improvements, Life Moves completed its capital project to rehabilitate the men's restroom at the Julian Street Inn Shelter. Total of 29 Milpitas residents were assisted by Life Moves at this facility. And for their second activity, progress was made on their, on their project to rehabilitate the women's restroom at the Julian Street Inn Shelter. A total of 24 Milpitas residents were assisted by Life Moves under this activity. Next slide. So this slide refers, reflects our accomplishments towards the goals we set in our consolidated plan. On the far left column are all of the city's goals. In the middle column is the percentage completed for the goal set for this fiscal year. On the right is the percentage completed of goal, of the goal set for the three-year consolidated plan. So in this case, the far right column is the combination of this year and last year's progress towards that goal. While the city has generally met its goals for each year, there are a few areas where our sub-grantees fell short of their stated goal. Our next slide will describe a few of the challenges in accomplishing their goals. We are also still making progress on the completion of the three-year goals. The final CAPER for the consolidated plan, which will be presented to council next September, will provide the final assessment of our overall progress towards these goals. Next slide. So as noted in the previous slide, some sub-grantees were unable to meet goals set out at the beginning of each year. Each year, we survey our sub-grantees to provide us context of the challenges experienced during the year, and here is a summary of their feedback. Some noted a difficulty with the method of outreach for their activity, or that their goals for reaching Milpitas residents were set too high. Some had difficulty recruiting and keeping qualified staff. Others noted socioeconomic factors. All in all, we believe our sub-grantees perform admirably and exceeded expectations. They all showed great flexibility in fulfilling their activities with the various challenges they experienced. And above all, through all these challenges, they continue to provide essential services to our community. And now, our final slide, which is our recommendations. Number one, open the public hearing, hear testimony, then move to close the public hearing. Number two, approve the draft fiscal year 2023, 2024 Community Development Block Grant, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. And number three, authorize the city manager or designate to make any necessary changes, and to submit the approved draft fiscal year 2023, 2024 CAPER to HUD to comply with CDBG requirements. And just a quick special thanks to Michelle Silva for all her hard work administering the CDBG program on behalf of the city. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Robert Musalem. He's the housing director. So now, we will call for a public hearing on any of the comments that the director made. Is there anyone from the public?
I have a public speaker card from Angelica Hogan.
Good evening. My name is Angelica Hogan. I am the Director of Programs for Silicon Valley Independent Living Center. As Mr. Musalem shared, we, through the CDBG grant allocation, we were able to provide 60 housing and independent living workshops, online and in person, at the Barbara Lee Senior Center, as well as we were able to provide in-depth housing counseling and other related independent living services to 46 Milpitas residents with disabilities. I'm here just to say thank you for your continued, continued support to those that have, that are seniors and that have disabilities in our community. We appreciate it, and we look forward to our partnership in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the work you did, you do, for our seniors and for those that have disabilities. Thank you.
We have several more public speaker cards. First, we've got Elena Purcell, followed by Jonathan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Mayor Montano, thank you, and city council. I'm here on behalf of Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley. My name's Elena Purcell Schrader.
Can you speak a little bit louder? I think there's something wrong with the mic.
Yeah, I'll just, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley. I wanted to come tonight to say thank you so much to city council, to mayor, and to city staff. We're very fortunate to be able to provide our home repair program to our low-income neighbors in need across the city of Milpitas year after year. As Robert had mentioned, we were able to provide critical home repairs to over 17 families in need this past year, and we hope to be able to continue to do that critical work. So thank you again, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jonathan, followed by Georgina.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Jonathan Dar. I am the Development Director at Nextdoor Solutions for Domestic Violence. Just wanted to echo what our other nonprofit providers have said. Thank you for recognizing that citizens of Milpitas have needs that are met by some of our organizations. For the fiscal year we're talking about, 22 Milpitas residents have accessed our crisis team, 30 attended our support groups with 133 sessions, 13 clients received legal advocacy in 43 sessions. We provided support to 51 altogether, not counting their children who live in Milpitas and are in need of all forms of crisis intervention, and that's what a lot of our organizations are built for, the specialty to say someone shows up and we have seven or eight different things that we can do to support them. We try to be survivor-defined, culturally relevant, so people show up and we try to meet them with their, where they're at, speak their language, give them services that help get them, you know, back into civic participation and voting and working and all of those things that are difficult when you're facing trauma. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, but just wanted to echo everybody else and say thank you so much for your support and for continuing to recognize that the citizens of Milpitas need us.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Next, we have Georgina.
Good evening. Actually, I'm Georgia Basile, but that's close enough. Thank you so much. I'm the Directing Attorney of Senior Adults Legal Assistance. As many of you know, we provide free legal services to Milpitas clients 62 or older, targeting clients that are low income or at risk of loss of, losing their independence or at risk of abuse. We continue to provide our services locally here at Barbara Lee Senior Center every month, and by phone for clients that can't get to the senior center or cannot leave their homes. We are a current CDBG grantee, and we thank you so much. We're also a CDBG grantee from 2023, 24, and there's a summary about our services included in the CAPER. I just wanted to give you a few updates about that or augment that. Specifically, the CAPER does say we served 45 Milpitas residents, 62 or older, last year. Of those clients, most of them were served at Barbara Lee Senior Center initially. 84% of those clients were very low income under CDBG guidelines. 40% were 75 or older, placing them at loss of independence or at risk of abuse. 56% were female, and 71% identified as minority seniors. We really appreciate the support we get from you. We cannot charge fees for our services or take fee generating cases. So the only way that we can provide expanded services is through your funding and through other grants from other cities. So we do thank you very much for your current support and for your past support, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the CAPER. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have no additional public speaker cards, Mayor.
Thank you. Do any of the council members have any questions for any of the presenters? We have Vice Mayor Chua.
I just want to thank the nonprofits that are here this evening. It shows really your commitment to build relationship with us, and we have built relationships for many, many years. 10-plus years ago, I was on the CAC, which administered the, the CDBG, and like Sala, I've known for a long time. These are like Rebuilding Together. I mean, you know, I'm just so happy to see all of you. And I do want to have a shout out to our staff, Michelle, and our housing director, Robert Musalem, or housing officer, I should say. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I don't see any more comments. We're going to close the public hearing, and then we will need a motion to accept, for the recommendation to approve the draft for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, the CAPER. And so it was moved by Vice Mayor Chua for the CAPER, and, is there a second? And it was seconded by Councilmember Leanne. So now, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Barbara DiO.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Councilmember Phan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I'm an aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you all the nonprofits for being here and keep doing the great work you do. So now, we're moving on to leadership and support services. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This last item, number 12, is the quarterly priority discussion by the council of items that were referred to staff by individual members of the council over the past several months. These are generally items that will require more than four hours, and we have our Assistant City Manager, Matt Keno, here to facilitate that discussion and the voting process.
Thank you, Matt Keno, Assistant City Manager, and you have the presentation, a hard copy of this presentation in front of you, and there's a copy in the back as well, if any one. And there's a copy in the back as well, if anyone would like an extra copy. So on Slide 2, under Background, on January 2020, January 2021, the Council provided direction for staff to bring forward an individual agenda item request from members of the City Council on a quarterly basis for Council consideration. And in 2023, January, this was adopted into a revised policy that set parameters for how we would bring these forward and how we would prioritize new work efforts. Since early 2021, approximately 200 council items have been addressed and prioritized or addressed without prioritization as they're under four hours of work. Our last prioritization session was in June 2024. And tonight, we're bringing forward items that were brought forward during the announcement section of a City Council meeting that gained consensus between June 11th and the last Council meeting on September 3rd, 2024. The next slide, Slide 3. Summer of Requested Items. There's 35 items on the spreadsheet that's attached to the Agenda Report. Four items are new items that are judged to be more than four hours of work by staff. And so are brought forward for a prioritization vote for you this evening. There are four additional items in Group 2 that are new as well, but can be done under four hours of work. And so we're not asking those to be prioritized. And those either have or will be starting to move forward soon. And there are a number of items, 19, that have been prioritized or worked on in the past that are not completed yet. And then eight items that have been completed since the last update. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry. On the next slide. Slide 4 shows items that either are newly underway because we moved forward because they're under four hours of work, or completed since the last update. I won't read through everything in detail here, but some new items that are underway, such as recognizing the local Olympians, that is tentatively scheduled for October 16th. We've confirmed that two out of the three local Olympians are working on the third. Coordinating with Supervisor Lee's office on the weeds on Montague Expressway is an ongoing effort. We've had some success, but we're still working with the county on that. And reviewing funds for the library sign and evaluating hours for the food pantry. So those four are new items that are under four hours' work or already aligned with city, what we're doing. And so we are not asking those to be prioritized, but those either are or will be worked on in the near future. There's a list of items that have been completed since the last update, such as a letter to the county regarding horse riding, the Build the Future Santa Clara County Childcare Campaign, the Solicitation Ordinance, which was finalized on the consent calendar this evening, changing the name of the Community Advisory Commission to focus on housing, changing the name of the County Library on Main Street, reviewing our NARCAN practices, the City Employment Job Fair, and exploring the Compassion Fund. So those are items that are completed since the last update. Next slide. And on the next slide. The next four slides, I'm going to quickly review the new items, the four items that are up for a prioritization vote this evening. On each of these slides, there's some background. And there's also some questions on clarification and direction needed. Regarding the clarification and direction needed, I'll go through that quickly. But after the prioritization vote, if you don't mind, for those items that get prioritized, I'll come back to those slides and ask if there's any further clarification Council wants to provide for those items that are prioritized. So the first of the four items up for a prioritization vote tonight is the ADU ordinance. This is recommended by Vice Mayor Chua. And as background, state law AB 1033 removed the previous state law that prohibited against subdividing and selling an ADU as a condo. So local agencies now have the option of adopting a local ordinance to allow ADUs to be sold or conveyed separately from the primary residence to a qualifier buyer if certain conditions are met. On the next slide, this was recommended by Mayor Montano, exploring the potential purchase of a property on Main Street. As background, the address 174 to 176 South Main Street is for sale. According to publicly available information, the purchase price is listed at 1.995 million. And if purchased, then, or if we proceeded with this item, then we could talk in the future about how to fund it and then what the use would be. On the next slide, CCO3 Animal Cruelty Ordinance. This was recommended by Vice Mayor Chua. On a one-time basis, this would require the addition of a provision to the Humane Treatment of Animals section of the Municipal Code to address a section regarding the standards for the boarding and treatment of horses and other animals such as cats within Milpitas. On an ongoing basis, funding required for the enforcement would not be known until after the implementation. It would depend on the case volume and enforcement mechanism. The next and final item, CCO4 Rental Assistance. This is recommended by Mayor Montano. On August 13th, 2024, the Council approved an additional $700,000 to the Rent Relief Program for our next phase, since our previous phase was successful and the funds were exhausted. The new funding source for the $700,000 was a state earmark grant sponsored by Alex Lee's office a few years ago. Mayor Montano requested the staff explore the possibility of amending the rent relief cap from $5,000 per calendar year to $3,500, or there's possibly another amount, to allow a greater number of residents to access to this program. So on the next slide, the recommendation. Our recommendation this evening is to review the list of agenda item requests from the individual council members and provide direction. Let's see where Daniel went. Provide direction to staff through the prioritization process on which group items should be advanced. And then provide additional input to staff, if any, on the Group 1 items that receive council direction to advance, or on all the Group 2 items. On Slide 10, we have the prioritization process. And I won't read through this in detail, but you've all been through this many times. Each members of the Council will prioritize their top two items from Group 1. And electronic voting will be conducted on your mobile devices or screen. And all items receiving three or more votes are considered approved. If the number of items is two or greater, the prioritization process will be deemed complete. If the number of items is less than two, all remaining items will be prioritized in subsequent rounds. So last time, typically, what the standard we use is two to three items would move forward through this prioritization process. And so if after the first round, only two items received the majority votes, you could consider doing another round for a third item. So with that, you should have all received... You should have all received an email from Daniel. Was it yesterday or earlier today? Okay. So Daniel can assist you in the voting. So Mayor, if you'd like, we can then proceed with the voting.
Okay.
So each, again, each member of the Council will prioritize the top two items from Group 1.
Okay. We need some help.
Our IT Director, Daniel Nam, will assist you.
We have a question from Councilmember Lian. Matt, Deputy City Manager. So we are voting the two top. And all the discussions will be taken when this item is brought back to the Council.
Correct. We definitely can't take any... You would... Whatever moves forward through this prioritization process, you're just asking us to go back and work on it and then bring it back to you at a future time for discussion and evaluation. However, those items that do get prioritized this evening, if there's an opportunity, I would like to ask you some questions just to get preliminary feedback from some of you about what you may want to see when we come back. But again, we won't make any... We're not asking for any decisions on those items, other than if they're prioritized, the only decision that would be made tonight is for us to come back to you with recommendations.
Okay. Thank you. And just clarification, that's just to put those four hours or more to do the research.
Yes, do that research, do whatever analysis we need to do, and then come back to you with recommendations.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I just want to add on the animal cruelty guidelines.
I just want to... Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add to the cruelty guidelines. There is a number of residents reached out to me just recently, and they're concerned about the cats. And specifically Canton Street, and also on the Pines area. There's a proliferation of cats for some reason. So somehow, we need to add that there somewhere on C3 to look into when you do your research. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So did you want me to ask the public for a comment on this?
Yes.
So anyone from the public that would like to make a comment before we start to vote?
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor. Voltaire Montemayor.
Sorry, I wasn't ready with cards. Anyway. Me, all good. I just point out that the process of prioritizing is great that you did. Thank you. And somehow, we are held by reflecting on the availability of the funds also. So sometimes, especially seven digits or more, maybe even six digits, maybe six digits below, we can easily insert as a priority. So for me, all good. The review of the agenda item request is good. Thank you.
I have no additional public speaker cards, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else out from the public that would like to make any comments? Seeing then, we'll close that public hearing. Public comments and any more discussion from the Council, clarifications? If not, we'll go ahead and proceed with the vote. So we have round one. Do you want us to start to vote now? Okay, I think we're done.
Mayor? The results are... We're still waiting on one set of voting. All right, the results are as followed. Mayor Montano voted for CC2 Purchase on Main Street, CC4 Revised Rental Assistance. Vice Mayor Chua voted for CC1, a new ordinance for ADUs, and CC3, the Animal Cruelty Guideline Ordinance Exploration. Next, we have Councilmember Fan. He voted for CC1, New Ordinance for ADUs, and CC3, the Animal Cruelty Ordinance Revision. Councilmember Lian voted for CC1, a new ordinance for ADUs, and CC2 Potential Purchase on Main Street. Councilmember Barbara Dyo voted for CC1, New Ordinance for ADUs, and CC2 Purchase for Additional Property on Main Street. The results are as follows. CC1 Exploring New Ordinance for ADUs received four votes. CC2 received three votes for potential purchase of property on Main Street.
All right, thank you for that. And so what's next, Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. And so the two items, just to clarify, that move forward in round one are, just to make sure that I got my notes right from listening to the city clerk, are the ADU ordinance, number one, is that correct, city clerk?
Yes, that was correct. ADU ordinance, CC1 and CC2.
CC1 and CC2. So the last time... So under the standard rules that we've been using, the voting would end because there's two items after the first round. However, last time we were here in June, the Council wanted to take one more vote for one more additional item. And so I just want to put that out there as an option if the mayor and council would like to take one more vote of items 3 and 4, to proceed with one more item, or if you would like to close the voting. It's up to you.
What is the will of the council? I would like to just go ahead and close it. Depends on the consensus of the council. Do you have Vice Mayor Chua done?
I really would like to address the animal cruelty. Because of the feedback that I got, their concern about the health issues on the streets and also people walking, jogging, and they see proliferation of cats. We need to investigate and find a way to do some policies on that because it's not only one or two streets, it's like a lot of streets. And I was kind of shocked, surprised to find out. That's all. So I urge my colleagues to please consider C... What is it? What is it? C?
C3.
C3. Let's vote.
So the stray cats, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, there's...
I think we've been dealing with that problem for a very long time, but you know...
We're not dealing with it correctly.
Depends on the council what you guys want. So let's take a vote and see who wants to put that on the items. So take a vote.
Do we vote?
Do we vote? I need some...
I'm sorry, Mayor. Yeah, we're going for consensus to add this to a future prioritization, or do that on this item?
Sorry, guys, but what I heard is the... What I heard, the request from the Vice Mayor would be consensus to move it forward as a prioritized item tonight, is what I heard.
So it would be a third one.
It'd be a third one for this evening.
Thank you. Then calling for consensus, Councilmember Barbara Dyo. C? This is CC3, the Animal Cruelty Ordinance.
And put it as a third priority.
Yes, please.
I'm fine. I'll agree with that.
Vice Mayor Chua?
Thank you. Aye.
Councilmember Lian?
Aye.
Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So we have the three items that would move forward. CCO1, the ADU ordinance. CCO2, exploring potential purchase of property on Main Street. And CCO3, the Animal Cruelty Ordinance. I'd like to see if Council would like to provide any additional feedback to us on those this evening. If not, we can always reach out to you individually during briefings for feedback.
Councilmember Lian?
It's not worked for there.
Okay. Thank you. So if we are going to consider ADUs, I know that there are areas in our city that has small lots. And with, you know, potential strain on parking availability, we should look into which area we allow ADUs to go into. And as we are looking to allow ADUs to be sold separately on its own. And this is going to the planning, the housing, and the permit process. But make sure infrastructure is in the process of approving ADUs too. And for the second item that I had was the purchase of Main Street. Well, actually, I'm going to hold that off until we bring it back.
One of the thoughts was a possible museum or other. And if there's any feedback on a use now from Mayor and City Council, we can take that feedback now, or we can bring options, we can bring a discussion back.
Well, I wanted to know if this is going to generate revenue and the job? And also if it's in the zoning for it? And I'd like to see what we have planned for purchasing that property on Main Street. Thank you. Okay, that it. Vice Mayor Chua?
Thank you, Mayor. I know there is a verbiage on the report about the... Thank you, Mayor. I know there is a verbiage on the report about the source of funds. Can, on when you come back, please reiterate exactly where you're going to get the funds for this one. Just, just detail it out, please.
Correct. Yeah, and we have the Strategic Property Acquisition Reserve. We have about seven hundred thousand in there right now and we'll provide, and that's Strategic Property Acquisition Revenue Fund. Alex, Director Andrade would correct me with the user reserve. It's Revenue Fund. It's intended to generate revenue for the city. And so we can definitely bring more information on that back when we come back.
Because that's only seven hundred. Where's the rest coming?
They're going to be discussing that.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. When they come back, I want to see exactly where the source of funds are coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments?
Mayor, if that's okay.
City Manager.
Mayor, I believe, and I may ask the Assistant City Attorney to weigh in on the Animal Cruelty Ordinance. We may want just a little more direction on the, the scope of that request. I know we've talked about, it's mentioned here, horses and cats. So I'm, I'm just wondering if there are additional questions that you may have as you're putting that ordinance together.
Right, from the comments that were made from council tonight and the scope of it, defining which animals we want, looking to boarding requirements for. And then the discussion tonight, which related, I think related to feral cats. If there was a desire in this prioritization of this item to have that also be within the scope to revise our feral cat requirements, which we do currently have in the code, that would be a slight expansion of the proposal. So if we could have a clear basis on what areas or a consensus on what areas staff should be looking into, particularly what types of animals, that'd be helpful.
I just want to have a review of what you, I mean, when you come back, show us what we have now and, and discuss what we can do.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Okay, so, um, we've already decided what priorities we want staff to go into. Do we need to take a vote? Okay, now we're going on to announcements and future agenda items. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Just a really quick one. Mayor, for each of the council members, I handed you a packet of materials right as the meeting began. This just kind of underscores all of the work that our Recreation and Community Services Department is doing. But you will notice that the, the second page, there's a flyer for the Lantern Festival, which will be this Friday, six to eight PM at the Civic Center Plaza. That's always a popular event. And then there's a number of other items for the rest of this month, October, and a few in November. And then the very last page, you will see it's a newsletter that is prepared by our Library and Education Advisory Commission. I'll point you to just a couple of things. On the front page, down toward the left corner, there's numbers for the library visitors. I, I found that very interesting. Our, our, as we all know, the library is a very popular place. And then separate from our own activities and offerings from our Recreation and Community Services Department, on the very back page, you will see a list of upcoming events at the library. One of, there, there's a brown-ish, a dark brown dialogue box on the, again, the lower left corner. You will see that our Emergency Services Manager, Tony Charlop, is going to be giving a disaster preparedness workshop on September twenty-sixth. So just a couple of items there, and you can look, look through those, but appreciate the, the time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else? If not, meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Good night, everyone.